Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the February 4th, 2013 Waschuggal City Council Meeting. And ask that you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Rose, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Boger. Councilmember Plinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Greenlee.
Here.
Councilmember Lindsay.
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel.
Here.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
We have not, that I know of, heard anything from Councilmember Boger this evening. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. First, pardon? First order of business, we have a proclamation this evening for Women's Heart Health Month. Whereas heart disease is the leading cause of death in the United States, it affects men and women of every age and race. And whereas more than 64 million Americans suffer from one or more forms of cardiovascular disease, including high blood pressure, coronary heart disease, congestive heart failure, stroke, and congenital heart defects that can lead to heart disease. And whereas by developing good eating habits, being physically active, and taking advantage of preventative screenings and avoiding drugs, tobacco, and excessive use of alcohol, individuals and families can significantly reduce the onset and burden of heart disease. And whereas many heart attack victims do not recognize the sign until it's too late, only one in five is able to reach a hospital quickly enough to benefit fully from treatment. And whereas far too many Americans are unaware of the danger of cardiac arrest, 95% of sudden cardiac arrest victims die before reaching the hospital. And whereas February has been declared American Heart Month, we encourage all Americans to join in the fight against heart disease and to learn more about how to prevent it. Now, therefore, I, Sean Gard, Mayor of Waschuggal, do hereby proclaim February 2013 as the American Heart Association's Women's Heart Health Month. And in doing so, encourage citizens to learn more about its risk factors, its warning signs, and lifesaving emergency response techniques by joining with the American Heart Association and Women's Heart Health Month. And with that, our first order of business are public comments. Any members of the public that would like to address council? Good evening, Harvey.
Harvey Olson, 3903 R Street. At the January 22nd council meeting, Consular Shoemaker stated that the current policy of charging a minimum of 10 units or 7,500 gallons per household for water usage back to actual gallons used should be examined by consul and staff in a decision made regarding a change in the current billing criteria. During citizen comment time, I agreed with Consular Shoemaker's comments. In discussions with other Waschuggal residents, I find that a large percentage of homeowners do not use all of the 7,500 gallons per month they are charged for. In particular, retired one or two-person households are on a fixed income. The 10-unit minimum discourages water conservation. How? Example, House A uses 5,250 gallons or seven units. House B uses 7,000 gallons or 9.333 units. Both pay for 10 units or 7,500 gallons. So House A ends up subsidizing House B's water payment for one-half the difference. House B pays for half the difference between B and a third house that uses a full 10 units. So the less you subs... The less you use under the 10-unit minimum, the more you pay per gallon and end up subsidizing the houses that use more water. Is this fair to our lower-income and retired residents, particularly in the current financial climate? This begs for questions to be asked and answered. Number one, who initiated the process to change to unit pricing? Two, why and how and when was it adopted? Three, how was the amount of 750 gallons that equal one unit arrived at? And why were 10 units decided as the minimum for all residents to pay, even if they used less water? If a resident uses an additional 200 gallons of water over the 10-unit 7,500-gallon minimum, are they charged for the actual 200 gallons used or are they charged for an additional full single unit of 750 gallons? The water usage pricing for Waschuggal residents should be amended to actual gallons used and the proposed review of the current minimum of 10-unit 7,500 gallons pricing policy cannot come soon enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Harvey. Is there anyone else that would like to address council?
Could I have a... I came in a second late, but I heard Mr. Olson's questions. I wondered if we can get an answer to them at some point? I thought they were good questions.
Certainly. We'll get those answers and get them distributed. Are there any other... Marilyn, good evening.
I'm Marilyn Tyrell. I'm at 950 G Street, Waschuggal. Currently, there's a lot of sound on the radio about radon. And I remember some time ago, the city council was gracious enough to buy some radon meters, whatever you call them, and make them available to the residents. I called the fire department today and they weren't... They remembered, but they weren't aware of where they were or if they are. So my question is, are they? And if so, maybe we could tell the people of Waschuggal that they are available?
We can. Rose, could you make a note in the morning and give Arianna a call? Thank you. Thank you, Marilyn. Anyone else from the public that would like to address council? Okay, moving into our consent agenda. This evening, the consent agenda consists of three items. Our council minutes of January 22nd, 2013, your workshop minutes of January 28th, 2013, and our regular accounts payable claims in the amount of 161,606.60 cents. Counsel? Prove the consent agenda as read. There are no objections. So ordered. Moving to new business, our first item is Agenda Bill 03-13, An Ordinance on Community Development Fee Holiday. Mitch?
Thank you, Your Honor. Counsel? Go over the fee holiday ordinance that's before you this evening. The... What we'll discuss is the what, where, when. I'd also like to go through some changes to the draft ordinance that were made since the last time that you reviewed it. And then I'll have a recommended action for you. So again, planning, building, fire, and engineering fees would be waived under this ordinance. It would apply to commercial, industrial, and mixed-use developments within the city. And it would end on December 31st of 2013. So really briefly, I'll go over some of the changes that we made. One, we were specific about the fees. We listed them out within the ordinance, what fees would be waived under the ordinance. We got very specific about the timing of application and we defined the timeframes for construction and when that would take place for each of the land use or building permit and land use types that would come in. We have a building permit by itself, a building permit with plan review, and then a land use permit with site plan, engineering, construction, and ultimately, building permit. So we were very specific about the timeframes for those. We also added in the failure to comply would result in remittance of the fees and we added interest in there as well. We use 2.2, which is from the CPI, less the food and energy. So that was the standard that we used for that. We also removed the previously approved projects section. We were going to look at going back, but that was going to cause us problems. Our legal counsel advised us against that. So we've talked with individuals that are looking at utilizing this. They're aware of when it's going to happen and they're working with us and they're waiting and basically to submit until the ordinance is in effect. And last but not least, I mentioned last week that we wanted to do as an emergency ordinance. However, legal advice is that it doesn't meet the criteria for an emergency ordinance. It's not a public health, safety, or property emergency. Therefore, we can't utilize the emergency provisions of adoption for the ordinance. So the recommended action to counsel is to read the ordinance by title only and pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Thank you, Mitch. Counsel questions? Jennifer?
I do. I have a couple of quick questions, just running through that Chapter 3. I see that 3.91 was skipped, that's water rates. 3.92 was skipped, sewer rates. And the 3.96 is making a change fund, so I understand why that was skipped. But I was just wondering about 3.95 and why that was skipped.
Do you know what 3.95 is?
I do. It's the miscellaneous public works department application fees. For like road modification requests, public right-of-way and easement vacation.
If that is the ordinance, that is a very good one. We should... We should correct that. Let me get to the...
It also includes right-of-way and easement vacation request fees, grading permit, plan review, and inspection fees, and the gates and other barriers request fees.
Those are typically not associated with a development in and of itself. A building permit itself includes the grading and site work done with that. A site plan review includes, and your engineering plan approvals, is your grading work approval, so you're not paying an additional fee for that. We don't calculate a grading permit fee for engineering plans submitted. It's just covered under the engineering plan review. So it's not...
So you're saying...
Those are like standalone, if I want to grade my lot or I want to stockpile a bunch of dirt or something like that, that wouldn't necessarily be related to development of a site for commercial or industrial purposes.
Okay. Well, then I have to question 3.97 has quite a bit in it that would apply to, you know, single-person residential improvements as well, like roofing or residential demo, that sort of thing. It just has a lot in there.
And it is... It's an all-inclusive list of building permit fees, but the ones that are specific would be the only ones that are related to the commercial, industrial, and the mixed-use development. We didn't go line item by line item within that fee ordinance because your ordinance would probably be longer than Chapter 3. But I think we were trying to at least capture that this is the title where the fees will be waived associated with these commercial, industrial, and mixed-use developments. The... I do want to look at the 3.95 real quick here, though.
In the meantime, I ask unanimous consent that when we get to it, we read the ordinance by title only.
He asked for questions.
There are no objections. So ordered. An ordinance waiving community development planning, building, fire, and engineering fees associated with certain commercial, industrial, and mixed-use developments in accordance with the specified criterion for a temporary period. Let's hang on with questions for him until he gets through this one.
Yeah, we don't use, in looking at this, 3.95010, road modification, I would say is one that we do utilize under... We get road modifications associated with site plan review. The right-of-way easement and vacation request, we don't normally get those. Those are independent. Someone's asking to waive or get rid of right-of-way. And the grading permit, plan review, again, like I mentioned, that's not an individual plan. That's covered in your engineering submittal and your building permit. That's for if you're doing just on one lot, you're looking at doing some grading, but it's not associated with the development, per se. So the one in that that I would say that we could look at adding is the road modification request. We do get that associated with site plan review, development review.
Is there some way, Mitch, that you can easily suggest some language or dawn to insert into the ordinance that we have in front of us?
Yeah, we can be very specific about just listing 3.95010 as being one of the ones that we could list in there. If you wanted to, you could say 3.95 because that's the same way that we did it with all the rest of the fees. We're just picking out the ones that are applicable to commercial, industrial, and mixed-use development.
So to handle the parliamentary terms here, I move that we pass, post, and publish the ordinance as read. And then I would propose a... I will make an amendment to that motion, propose an amendment to that motion to add WMC 3.95. Let's deal with one motion at a time, Paul. So I've got a motion to pass, post, and publish the ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Dave, we're going to get to all the questions. We're just trying to get the motion on the table. Just as a matter of parliamentary, you don't discuss the motion until it's moved?
I understand. As long as we don't vote on it.
No, 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 no. Well, you could object to a vote. I've now got a motion to amend the ordinance under Section 1, Number B, to add in Waschuggal Municipal 3.95.
Yes, that's what I was saying, that in... Well, what I was saying is that we didn't need to necessarily do that because like in the other chapters we list, there's other fees that are applicable. There's a lot more fees that are applicable in some cases, but we're only utilizing those that are applicable when it comes to a commercial or industrial or a mixed-use development. So we listed all those fees in there, but they're only waived if they're associated with that commercial, industrial, mixed-use. Because your engineering plans submittal, when you submit for site plan review, you're required to submit engineering plans and your engineering plans includes grading. It's included with that.
So I've got a motion. Is there any second? First, the original motion. I've got a motion.
You're seconding the amendment.
I've got a motion and a second to amend the ordinance in Section 1, Subsection B, to include Waschuggal Municipal 3.95. Other council questions, discussion on that motion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Other questions, other items? Dave? Jennifer, did you have more?
I did not.
Okay. Dave?
I noticed that you've included in the scope of this one... And I'm searching for that term. Can you throw those three things up there again?
Commercial and mixed-use.
Mixed-use development is... Includes residential. And since the focus of this is commercial and industrial, I was wondering why the mixed-use was included?
Because our commercial districts not only allow for that, they encourage that, that mix of uses. And so we wanted to, again, further encourage that mix of uses to occur.
And my objection to mixed-use being included in this is the fact that it goes back to the smart growth concept, which then has its roots in Agenda 21, the United Nations document. And I'm not in favor of that for all the reasons that are logically objectionable in those two agendas. I wasn't aware until tonight that the mixed-use was included. Did I miss that somewhere?
It's been there the whole time. We've talked about it.
We'll have to watch these things work out. I appreciate it. At any rate, to my colleagues, that's my objection to that particular piece. I don't see it as something that's going to be a big issue and therefore, I understand if you want to pass this thing.
Other questions, comments? Brent? Yeah, we certainly, just for council members that may not know, there is already a... Mitch, does he have preliminary approval on the old bank building from years back? In his block plans and all of that?
Yes, he has site plan approval for that.
One, Lone Wolf already has plans to demolish one of the buildings downtown and put together a multi-story building that has apartments and/or condominiums above it, retail on the main floors, those kind of things. We're also in discussions with some other folks about potentially coming in and looking at a development that would be mixed, not only mixed-use, but mixed uses of housing in the downtown core as well. So if those are areas council doesn't want to venture in towards, at least one of them is already on the books should it move forward. Other ones, there are discussions going on that not only encourage additional businesses in the downtown, but additional people living in the downtown to lynchpin those businesses, so... As am I. Dave?
And I will support this because it's my own fault that I didn't catch that. However, I would ask my fellow council members to take Burnside in Portland out to Gresham sometime and take a look at the mixed-use developments out there where you've got apartment buildings with no parking lots and very small parking lots and you've got vacant apartments over shops because nobody wants to live there.
Probably the showcase project for mixed-use development in the Portland metro is Orenco Station in Hillsborough, which was built from the ground up for that purpose. And it's been very successful. I'm aware of the problems on the Burnside corridor. But Orenco Station does have plenty of parking. Okay. Other comments, questions in regards to the fee holiday?
Yes. Yeah, I've been to Orenco numerous times. It is very pretty, very nicely done. And that's the key, isn't it? Starting out well. So in a mixed-use project, you can't separate... You can't separate fees. So in other words, you're building a retail store downstairs and a house upstairs above it. There's no way to separate those things out. They get a fee holiday for whatever they're doing for the downstairs retail, let's say. What about for the home? The living quarters?
It wouldn't... It would waive your building permit fees associated with that, but it wouldn't do any of your impact fees or any of those kind of things. Those things would still be collected.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to pass, post, and publish the ordinance as amended in the usual manner. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mitch. Moving on to Agenda Bill 4-13, a resolution adopting the strategic plan roadmap. Mr. Evers?
Mr. Mayor Guard, council members?
Apologies.
To the rescue.
It's not a blackout, though, for a half hour or so.
Good one. No, Beyonce wasn't involved.
Thank you, Mayor Guard, council. Before you tonight is a resolution in support of the strategic plan roadmap. It has been in the works since fall of 2011 during the public engagement campaign, where there was significant outreach effort in coffee conversations, meetings at the high school, the Best Western down in the Port area, walk and talk with business owners, phone surveys. Based on the information that was gathered from stakeholders, a strategic planning advisory committee was put together, nine members in the community, and extracted information from the public engagement campaign in developing the roadmap itself, specifically the mission, vision, values, and then ultimately, the priority pillars as we move forward as a community and an agency. You'll see inside the summary statement, it goes into a little bit further detail as far as each pillar, communication, community engagement, economic development, and core services. And so for consideration tonight, the recommended action is to read the resolution by title only and pass and post in the usual manner.
Thank you, Trevor. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I move to read the resolution by title only.
I've got a motion and a second to read the resolution by title only. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. A resolution endorsing the strategic plan roadmap. Oh, if you want to follow proper procedures, we should.
Mr. Mayor, I move to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner.
Got a motion and a second to pass and post in the usual manner. Counsel discussion. Brent? I think for the... It probably gets wrapped up most succinctly in just saying that we certainly, from the administrative side and the staff side, we want to make sure that the council is in agreement with the documents and the things that we've put together, the things we've heard back from the community and the way we intend to implement those moving forward. And other than discussions at workshops, meetings, that type of stuff, the way that we would memorialize that is through a resolution. You can never bind a future council. So and as we've discussed in many of the meetings for many different topics, the strategic plan itself is meant to be even more moving than our budget is, so... It would be expected that that would be amended and moved. Other council questions? Connie Jo?
Just a little bit about the history. I'm curious if you know the numbers, Trevor, about how many people attended the public outreach meetings? You know, the... Not the door-to-door for the businesses, but combined?
The outreach at the high school and the Best Western and here at City Hall, we averaged about 15, ranging from 12 to 20.
And what else? Starbucks?
Yeah, coffee conversations. We had one in the morning at the Waschuggal Crossing, Starbucks. We had four or five attendees.
I was one of them.
Coffee conversation. We also had one at Neater's Cafe on E Street.
Right.
And we also had one down at Papa's Ice Cream downtown in the Waschuggal Town Square.
So an average of 15 on the other big ones. So 15, 30, 45, maybe 60 people?
Right, so that was a physical face-to-face, so another... Right, so that was a physical face-to-face. So another component of the public engagement campaign was the phone surveys that were random off the water bills. I think I'd mentioned that, maybe in council retreat. And so we had about five hundred come via phone survey. Then we also had the electronic survey on the city's website, where we had upwards of a hundred and fifty submittals. Then other face-to-face at events, special events and community events during the campaign in the fall of 2011.
Okay, thank you.
Totalling close to thirteen hundred, which is just under ten percent of the population in aggregate.
Great. Dave?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the mayor for proposing this initiative. It's a good idea. Secondly, I'd like to thank the thirteen hundred people that participated, particularly people like Colonel Terry Babin who's here tonight, who brought his, the depth of his strategic planning and management background to the process. And I'd like to thank the staff for guiding the process and particularly for working with me to work out my concerns so that I could support this thing. You took a lot of time with me and I appreciate the effort. Having said that, I do have one concern. In Appendix B of the strategic plan, on electronic page nine of fifty-one pages in that appendix, it talks about priority development. And the last item says, niche market to businesses that will enhance diversity and add tax dollars. Trevor, could you tell me what the, how you define diversity there?
I think diversity, you know, reaching back to the conversations we had as an advisory committee, was the concerns with the lack of restaurants and/or amenities or specific businesses or services that were provided in the community, whether it was healthcare or restaurants or additional coffee shops. It was a diversity in services and products provided in the city of Washougal or in the community, not diversity of specific business owners themselves. If that makes sense. A larger portfolio of services in East Clark County, if you will.
Yeah, so as I understand it, it's directed toward diversifying our mix of businesses. That satisfies my concern. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions, comments? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Trevor, thank you very much for all of your work on this thing for the last, the last couple of years. This is, obviously as council knows and certainly as staff knows, this has been a, a Herculean undertaking that, that we diverted Trevor to, to working on and Joanne as well and the other folks involved, so. This is something that we were very hopeful that we would be able to bring successfully to a conclusion for you and we'll finish getting the, the business plans written for the individual departments and the implementation plan rolled out. Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank you Trevor for all the time you took when I came over and had concerns and wanted explanations. Very generous of your time and thank you. It's a good product.
I would like to make a motion. I would like to move that the council issue a thanks, heartfelt thanks to the staff and the volunteers, especially the steering committee of the strategic planning process.
I've got a motion and a second that the council issue a thank you to the staff and advisory board that were involved in the strategic planning process. Any questions? All those in favor?
Statement?
Aye.
Aye. I'm always slow on the gun.
Don't be shy. I'm moving on.
Not shy, just, oh, I swear I'm supposed to jump in, isn't it? I too just want to take a moment. Trevor, I didn't know you at all until I started observing your presentations a year ago. And I, I witnessed a man of great expertise and professionalism, very thorough. So I appreciate you very much and I wish Joanne were here to say thank you to her. And I would assume that in that thank you, Joanne will be included. So and to the staff too. I know you've all worked hard on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other items?
I'm new to the process and I also want to thank you. I didn't, I know most of the work hadn't been done before I got here, but I think it's an excellent document. And it gives us something to look forward to for the Washington future.
With that, we do still have a motion and a second to issue the thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With that, we come back to a second opportunity for anyone from the public that would wish to address council. Marilyn?
I'm still who I was. When I was a little girl, my mother could give me a few coins and send me off to the store to get milk or bread or whatever. And now that I'm getting older and close to probably the time when they're going to take my car away from me, it becomes increasingly important to me and probably to a lot of other people because this is a, a town that has a lot of older people. I'm hoping that when you're doing your planning, that you seriously consider ways that those of us who can maybe just walk can get to the basics. I'm not talking about strip malls, but it would be nice if there were a little store here or there within the residential community where we could get basics. Obviously, you know, were I in this condition that I hope I'm never in, I could call somebody and say I need to get my groceries. That's, you know, you go Safeway or whatever for that, but if I needed milk or bread, I would like to be able to trot that distance, whatever it is. And right now, from where I am to the, what is that? The, the market who's just on the Camas side, what am I trying to say? But anyway, that's a, that's, that's a hike for me now. And that's close, relatively speaking. So when you're, you know, when you're looking at little pockets of development where there's an opportunity for one or two lots, it would be really nice. I don't like strip malls, but having a place where there was a butcher and a grocer next door to, or something like that would be very nice. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is that I repeatedly find that things are going on that I know about only because I'm here and I'm, I'm still thinking that we as a city need to do a better job of PR, of advertising, of just letting us know what we are doing. Because, you know, when, when Trevor was talking about those meetings, I didn't attend one because I didn't know about it until it was too late. And if only the few number that Connie Jo asked about showed up, that doesn't mean a lack of interest. It might be a lack of, of awareness. So I don't know how you go about doing that, but I, I don't think that just, that concentrating and depending on the internet is necessarily the best or only way to go. Thank you.
Thank you Marilyn. Anyone else from the public that would like to address council? Okay, moving to mayor's report, I have two items for you this evening. The first one, I hesitated to mention as we started the meeting because I didn't want anybody cluing into them any more than we have been. But obviously, we have our new screens and we have our new cameras. Rose, you've been doing a tremendous job so far of fading in and out and moving us back and forth. I'll let council members contact staff outside of the meeting to just let folks know whether it, it's good to have different things up there when we don't have anything going on or if it's okay just to turn those screens off.
I think we should have the camera either on the podium or the mayor.
Yeah, at least one of those isn't an option, so. Anyway, so obviously going through the, the shakedowns of that, I think they finished installing Jennifer on Friday.
Yes, close to five o'clock.
We're hopefully going to be back here today and weren't. So we've gotten the system functioning so far. We'll see how well it taped. We'll see if it's ready for prime time or hopefully the non-prime time. So anyway, enough on the taping system. Second item of business is in regards to our community development department. I would like to put forward to council's consideration, the appointment of Mitch Knype, our interim community development director, to drop the word interim from his title and name him as our community, community development director.
I also move, Mr. Mayor.
Second. I've got a motion and a second. Any council discussion? Dave?
I've never seen a better appointment come from this city.
Thank you. Paul?
I've known Mitch now... Turn my mic on. I've known Mitch now for, I think, six or seven years and have always been impressed by his professionalism and his commitment to the city. I think this is an excellent appointment. I'll miss Joanne because I very much like Joanne, but that said, I'm really glad to have Mitch on board.
I've known Mitch for about six years and I have to say, I concur with my colleagues. This is an excellent choice and he certainly has earned it over the past year and a half or so. Been very, very pleased with his work and I'm very, very happy to give my thumbs up on this appointment.
And Mitch, being someone who's kind of in the same business you're in, you know, different aspect of it, I hope you don't take my general teasing and harassing you.
Just, just scratch his fin for him every once in a while.
Let's not let that rub off on him. Any other items from council?
I want to echo it.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to appoint Mitch Knype as our community, community development director. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mitch, congratulations. Are there any items from council? Any items from council? Dave?
I see some down there.
Mr. Mayor, I want to, I want to congratulate you on the special event that you had over the weekend in Portland that was very enjoyable and had a great time there.
Thank you very much.
Facebook.
I haven't seen that.
On a, on a bit more serious note, I had, yesterday I had dinner with one of our legislators and we started talking about some of the things that we talked about at our, our treaty. And that is our structural deficit, you know, how I-747 was a, that the one percent cap on increasing property taxes. And one of the things that was suggested to me is we need to take a look at how much of, how much revenue we get per year from growth as opposed to the one percent. And basically the idea was is that by having that one percent cap, you know, your, your additional growth is something you get over that. How much of our property, I don't know how exactly to phrase this question, but how much of our change in property tax revenue is, is a result of growth? And how much of it is a result, I know zero was, was as a result of our one percent this most recent year, actually probably a negative number. How, how much does growth make up for this cap, I guess is the question. And if there's any way you can get that information, I'd like to know that.
We have that. We project it and then we get it. Then when they give us our levy numbers, they give us an actual number, so we have that very precisely over the years. It's been pretty modest. Less than modest really over the last several years. One, one, sometimes less than one.
Percent.
Right, percent, yes. So it's been very, very modest over the last several years. I think six, seven years ago, it was
It was better.
It was better. We could certainly pull that information together for you.
I think what I was hearing is that, you know, the contrary argument that the legislator heard. And I didn't really have a great response for it because I really wasn't aware. I know I'd probably seen it somewhere, but I was, it didn't dawn to me what that figure was. And it's not like I, like I'm advocating in doing anything with I-747. I'm not a, I don't have any power over that. But I, I just wondered if we just publicized this and took this collectively to cities, whether that might be something, some approach we could take. Because it is, if that's, if that's the contrary, if that's the line that we, that we're getting to support continued application of I-747 and it isn't that much revenue as I would imagine Washougal probably has a lot higher growth than most cities do. You know, that should be countered.
That's a good point. Other items from council? Dave?
We had a regional fire authority meeting on Tuesday, the twenty-ninth of January. And the financial consultant, Paul Lewis, that the group hired to look at the feasibility of a regional fire authority, gave us an hour and a half report. And there was a test yesterday on whether or not we got the message. But he came up with two recommendations. First of all, he noted that most of the benefit that we could get from a regional fire authority, we've already obtained from the consolidation of the two fire departments in Washougal and Camas. And so that, that impacted on his recommendations. His recommendations are that we continue the fire department consolidation. There are a lot of issues that still need to be shaken out. There are some labor issues, labor contract issues, and a variety of other things about pay and benefits. He also recommended that we not immediately look at the regional fire authority, but keep it on the back burner for the next couple of years and reevaluate it in two to three years based on the success of our consolidation of the two departments. So the group has not come up with a recommendation to pass to the two councils yet, but it looks like they will probably recommend something along these lines that Paul Lewis gave us. And our next meeting is the fourth Tuesday in February. Look for you there.
Thank you Dave. Connie Jo?
I want to invite the community to an event Saturday that is being put on by the Community Pregnancy Clinic from, of Camas-Washougal. It's ladies tea this time. Guys, you don't get to come. It's just the girls. And it starts at one-thirty. It's going to be at the Fairgate Inn. And just a reminder that the clinic's purpose is to help support women in pregnancy and a wonderful, wonderful outreach to our community. Lots of teenage girls go through there that have, need support. It's a wonderful process that the kids, that the kids, the ladies go through in order to earn things that they need, clothing, bassinets, cribs, everything that you can imagine would be needed for a newborn. They can earn those things through education. And so that's the beauty of the clinic is that it's a way to educate young ladies how to be moms. And so come join me. Love to have you. There's no cost. Donations are accepted. It is a nonprofit. Thanks.
Thank you. Joyce?
Last week I delivered meals on wheels, loaves and fishes. They put, send the meals out. It's a volunteer service and I did it through Rotary from our community center and it is very nice to live in a community where people can have food that aren't able to go and shop or cannot get out. It's a wonderful program and it deserves everybody's support.
Second that.
Third, I third that.
Paul?
Busy week this past week, of course, the regional fire authority meeting Tuesday night, which I, I, I'm a bit of a, I like sitting in a, in a chair learning things and it's always fun for me to sit and listen to what Paul Lewis has to say. He's very professional and very knowledgeable. Wednesday, Dave Scott and I went up to Olympia to testify at the legislature about two bills which had to do with stormwater.
which had to do with stormwater. One of them would, without going into lots of details, would create more flexibility within the Department of Ecology on their grants. And then the other one would make essentially a special case out of Clark County, that Clark County could negotiate a separate plan with the Department of Ecology that is more suited to the geology and the situation that we find here in Clark County, which is quite different than any of the other Phase One stormwater counties. There was, there were quite a number of Clark, it was Clark County people who were up there testifying in favor of that, some against, but quite a group. It was, it was a fun trip. I enjoyed myself. Thursday, I went to, from eight in the morning till two in the afternoon to a John Schallert seminar called "Increasing Sales and Profits as a Destination Downtown." I'm not myself a merchant, but I thought I could learn something that I could bring home to my downtown merchants. And we'll, I mean, it was forty dollars, so it didn't seem exorbitant to see if I could learn anything. And then Thursday night was the grand opening for Gorge Friends of their new offices, which are in the eighteen-eighty-seven building, which is right across from Amnesia Tavern. There were easily a hundred people there. It was amazing, the number of people who showed up for that. And one of the other things that I wanted to mention publicly is that both Renee Teekatch and Kevin Gorman, who, Renee is the local office person here, and she's the lead on Towns to Trails. And Kevin Gorman is the executive director of Gorge Friends, Friends of the Columbia River Gorge. If you're not familiar with them, they're an interesting organization. It's gorgefriends.org. They are, on the one hand, a land trust. They acquire land and then put it into the public domain for part of the gorge scenic area. But they also lead a lot of outings, hikes, wildflower walks, bicycle trips on the Clickitat Trail. So it's a very interesting organization. Both of them went out of their way to say wonderful things about Wes Hickey and Lone Wolf Development. He's been a longtime supporter of Gorge Friends and of the things that we're trying to do on this side of the river to make the gorge literally an international destination. One of the, one of the great ideas that's being talked about, and I admit it probably won't be in my lifetime, but it's a thing that people do in Europe more than here. But when you get to be my age and hair color, the idea of putting on a fifty-pound pack and hiking twelve or fifteen miles and then sleeping on the ground doesn't really have a lot of appeal. On the other hand, the idea of leaving the, the hiker's hut or the bed and breakfast and walking down the trail until two o'clock in the afternoon and then settling down in front of a glass of red wine, that has a lot more appeal. And that's part of the plan of where they're trying to go with this towns-to-trails thing, is that it would connect all the way essentially from the Heritage Trail around Lacamas Lake, all the way out to Biggs Junction, cross the river there. Actually, of course, there's crossings at all of the bridges. The Pacific Crest Trail actually crosses Bridge of the Gods. But then come back down the Oregon side kind of the same way. And so it, it's kind of a thrilling idea that, that Gorge Friends have been working on now for a couple of decades, actually. And as I said, there were over a hundred people there, so it was really exciting. And I guess that's it. I have two more things. Harvey, let me talk to you after the meeting. And I wanted to thank Rose. She's done a great job here. She's new at this TV producer thing. And I think she's done a fabulous job tonight. So thank you, Rose.
Any other items? Jennifer?
Yes. I just wanted to mention that I read today that the Camas-Washugle Chamber is putting out a notice for their scholarships this year for students from both Waschugle High School and Camas High School. It's a thousand dollars for scholarships. And I understand some years, they actually do not give, have not had anyone apply. So if you know of any high school students that are going on to higher ed and are interested, please encourage them to apply. I'm sure they would love to give the money. So I also attended the RFA meeting, very, very interesting meeting and well-attended. And I also attended the Portland Seafood and Wine Festival, which was the mayor's company's event. And it was wonderful as well to benefit multiple sclerosis. And had a great time. And I just wanted to thank him for doing that. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Connie Jo?
Now, I didn't know about that. See, that's one of those things you gotta know. After the fact, I just had a lot of fun. So I need to get on your mailing list.
Or a few TV stations and a lot of radio stations.
I don't have television.
Newspapers.
Speaking of mailing lists.
You're out there quite a bit.
I wanted to mention, this is the magazine of the Association of Washington Cities. You can't see the picture very well, but that is a picture of Mayor Guard right in front of the tunnel. And there is a one, two, really two-page article on the mayor. And so I will leave my copy out on the table there for anybody who wants to look at it.
Hopefully, it's more on the community than it is on me.
It is, it is.
It was very kind of.
No.
You see to, to list Waschugle as one of their profile cities.
And it's, it's a very good article. We should be proud of it.
And we were also mentioned in the Vancouver Business. I'm not sure the exact title, Vancouver Business.
Journal.
Journal.
Front page.
Excellent article. But I do have something more to say. Oh, they're gonna get me on your mailing list. I don't have television. Did you catch that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, internet? Ready for internet advertising?
We got a lot of it. And even the good old dial radios. You could even get us on a crystal set. We can go way back.
Crystal set, yeah. I do have one of those. Okay. So the purpose of my hand to be raised is that C-Trans, I want to remind the community that C-Trans is holding a public hearing concerning the bus route forty-one, that it impacts Waschugle. I don't believe it's a negative impact. I believe it's a, a money-saving opportunity, which we always want to save our tax dollars and spend them well. So if you have any input, feel free to join us, not tomorrow night, but February twelfth at C-Trans in Vancouver at five-thirty noon again. And you can also leave comments on the internet on their website.
Any last items from council members? If not, I would adjourn or welcome a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.